One or two songs, Mr.?
Well, we had two, but...
Yeah, we're just gonna do one and I, we have a few people.
We wanted to whet your appetite for this Saturday.
Yes, because we're playing all three, we're playing three on Saturday, and the fifth grade band combined is about eighty-five, and they're gonna be doing about three pieces also. So, and then every other on Saturday plays, so make sure you come out Saturday evening.
Mr. Harris, can I have you up in here, please? You gotta jump in for a quick picture. I'm on, I'm on.
You want the proud father?
Yeah, yeah, get Jeff. Hey, you're the VP, man. Mr. Harris, we're gonna use today for one, two, three. Okay, you can go ahead and say it, Mr. Harris.
Okay.
One, two, three. I thought you were gonna say cheeseburgers.
Yeah, I don't know, come on.
Thank you, guys, and thank you very much for coming.
Thanks very much, kids, that was great, and thank you, parents, for bringing the kids out to Serenades this morning and whet our appetite, so. Yeah, we'll wait a couple minutes so that the kids can take order the dismissal here, I doubt. Too much distraction, so we'll hang on a minute here.
That's like so old, there's so many.
Call the March twelfth, Daniel Boone School District, meeting the halls of order. We've already done the pledge. Mr. Wolf, would you read the... Wolf, Wolf. Yes, Mr. Rapkin. Ms. Aubrey?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Dershowitz?
Here.
Mr. Strobel? Mr. B. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Wolf, here. Mr. J. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Olson?
Here.
Mr. Rapkin?
Here.
Wolf, please. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Procedures for public participation are in your handouts. If you haven't signed in the packet, please do so. There will be an executive session following to discuss legal and negotiation issues. Are there any agenda edits at this time? And is any representative from GCA here, by chance, or no?
No.
Okay. Then we'll start off with...
Pioneer Athletic.
Yep, to... The potential.
Okay, Pioneer Athletic Conference, come on down.
It is on if you want to adjust it.
Do you need the projector?
No.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Gary Durenzo, I'm the Director of Athletics and Student Activities for the Pots Grove School District. Also is Dr. Patrick Nugent, the High School Principal at Springford, and Mr. Nick Palladino, Athletic Director at the Leaertown Area School District. We're here this evening on, in January. Mr. McKnight, Mr. Schmidt, and Mr. Harris invited us to an informational meeting about the possibility of Daniel Boone looking at moving into the Pioneer Athletic Conference. And just to give you a little bit of history, in 2014, in February 2014, our Pioneer Athletic Conference experienced some of the same issues that Daniel Boone, I believe, is experiencing right now. And our efforts to explore expansion have been, they were generated by several factors. First, our league has experienced uneven growth in the past ten years, resulting in a distinct disproportion in member school enrollments. Secondly, due to the disparity of individual school classifications, as you know, we've gone and moved to a six-classification type of model now. The inception of current PI double A playoff seating procedures, our league has encountered challenges in placing our teams in the most advantageous position. In other words, our bigger schools got bigger, our smaller schools relatively stayed stagnant. With this said, we believe that many factors make our league an attractive option for your school to consider. These items include, but are not limited to, proximity to member schools. Our conference is basically located along the 422 corridor, which limits travel time, which tries to keep a close proximity so that we're not pulling students, athletes out of school earlier. It also has the possibility of maintaining current rivalries. We have outstanding facilities, divisional championships, and we've established a wide variety of Final Four competitions. It's important to note that our expansion efforts intended to include middle schools as well, to booster the number of opportunities for our young athletes as well. And what that means is they continue to, they continue to compete from their middle school level all the way through to the high school level. There is no change in schools that they compete against. While we are relatively new compared to other leagues throughout District One, our league has experienced outstanding success. By increasing the number of large and small schools, we feel that we've been able to create divisions that allows each of our schools' athletic teams to prosper. Both larger and smaller schools have the ability to compete against schools of more similar enrollments, less travel time, which should assist in their quest to qualify for PI double A postseason playoffs. I handed out, we handed out a brief packet, and those enrollment numbers are based on the 2015 enrollment from PI double A, they will be updated this year. So you would see with the enrollment of Daniel Boone where you might be, you know, placed. Like I said, we are in a divisional format, and again, some of the issues that we've experienced as a league, I think, are much more common in a variety of areas right now. We've entertained a number of individuals that have inquired about the possibility of joining our league, and we're here tonight to, please, provide some information to the board if you have any additional questions. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Palladino, to kind of give you a little overview of how we operate.
Thank you, Mr. Durenzo. As Gary stated, for most of our athletics, the league's broken up into two divisions, our Liberty Division and our Frontier Division, based on enrollment. Like you said, these numbers are based upon the 2015 PI double A enrollments. With middle schools, we're very proud of our, of our middle school scheduling. We offer that opportunity to every school and district that is in our league. Currently, all member schools take advantage of our middle school scheduling. And starting with next year, in the eighteen-nineteen school year, our middle schools are gonna be broken up into an east and west. That way, we can save on transportation costs and also increase classroom time. One thing we are very good with in our, in our league with the middle school programming is if something needs to be rescheduled or moved, canceled, we always try to reschedule our middle schools. We put as much emphasis towards our middle school scheduling as we do for our varsity and JV. That way, everybody can have the opportunity to succeed and move forward with their athletics. Again, for the middle school scheduling, the PAC East and the PAC West, this will start next year. It's broken down to do just for us to help save on our transportation costs and also, again, for the in-classroom instructional time. For the playoffs, we have Final Four events, we also have Final Six event in boys and girls basketball, and then championship events in the other sports. The Final Four events, boys and girls soccer, field hockey, girls volleyball, baseball, softball, boys and girls cross. Our kids, our student athletes, are very excited when it comes to these Final Four events. They actually, they're winning championships, seeing their faces after a team wins their championship, the excitement is amazing. We draw pretty big crowds for us, our football was Pots Grove last year, we drew big crowds for that. Last year for baseball was at Bear Stadium, we had between nine hundred and a thousand people there for our baseball championship game. So it creates a lot of excitement within these school districts and within the league itself, and pretty much everybody comes out for the championship event. Some of the other sports that just have their regular championship, either individual events or tournaments, or golf, singles, doubles, tennis, for both boys and girls, cross-country, wrestling, track and field, and our football is a championship event also. That's our last week of this season, it's considered our championship event. Now, for any questions you might have, I'd like to introduce Dr. Nugent.
Thank you, everybody. My role with the league has been, I've been the president of the Pioneer Athletic Conference for a duration of sixteen years, so it's been a while. Couple things that may be on your mind, and I can just bring one or two things up, and then open it up to questions that you might have. You guys are, Daniel Boone sits in District Three, and primary, all of our schools, they're all District Ones, so in the PI double A. Leaertown's an example, when Leaertown came into the league, they did participate in District One. They transitioned, I mean, to District Three, they transitioned to District One, so that's an option for Daniel Boone to consider as well, if they would make application to our league, to our conference. So just bring that up as a point of reference, some people may have that as a question, District Three is a different districts. So really, what that would mean is, it's a choice that you would make as a district, as a school district, to determine what district, PI double A district, you would want to sit in. One of the things I wanted to bring up as well is the decision to leave where you are and go to another place is obviously a large decision, and it does have impact in the community, et cetera. We have grown since the inception of our league, we've had some teams, some school districts come and go. Great Valley had come into our conference and then left the conference, a lot of that had to do with some geographics and things that happened on that end. But Upper Marion is a recent member of our league, they left Suburban, which was a pretty entrenched conference for many, many years, and Upper Marion's made a pretty seamless transition into our conference. Mefacton did come to our conference recently as well, and also, Norristown has just joined our conference, leaving Suburban. So our conference, I think, is attractive to some folks, especially when we went out and we were looking at expansion. One of the schools that we put on our list to speak with was Daniel Boone. We thought that proximity-wise, it was a nice location, it's not far, we thought that the school district was in a position where the schools are relatively close all the way to Upper Marion, and again, as Mr. Durenzo said, the 422 corridor makes everything pretty accessible in that realm. So the process, basically, at this point is, we wanted to just give you a little background on our conference, and I can try to answer any questions you might have. If Daniel Boone would so desire to be a member of the conference, they would make official application to the conference, and that would go before our, our conference for a vote. As the PI double A operates in the state of Pennsylvania, it's a little unique, but the person that is responsible for PI double A functions is a high school principal, and that's just the structure of the organization. So that, that is something to keep in mind when you start making decisions and such. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have, there's a lot of history to our conference, I was an actual coach and a member of the Chesmont when I first started at Springford, and we made the transition. Our, our conference has been very collegial in a lot of ways, we have, everyone has a seat at the table, everyone is an active participant in conversations, we have conference meetings for a year where we require the principal and athletic director to be present. So I think it's a well-structured league, there's been outstanding success, but success isn't always championships, I think a lot of students, a lot of our teams have experienced success in individual, as well, individual sports. So I can open it up to questions, anything that you may have.
I have some. Is that okay? All right, I know one of the things you mentioned was travel time because of 422 corridor, and I did some research. Just so the board knows, there's currently four schools in our current league that are twenty minutes or less that we travel to. There are none in this new league that are under twenty minutes. So there's five twenty to thirty minutes, we would have six, and then twenty to thirty minute range. They have three, that'll be over forty minutes, depending on the numbers you use for MapQuest, we might have two, for if you count Coopstown, or we have one. So I don't know if the sales pitch of travel time and cost savings is there, when it seems like we could be traveling further to a lot of these schools compared to the majority of our Burke schools. Ten of them are under thirty minutes, whereas five of these schools, but actually, like nine of them are over thirty minutes. So I have some concerns there, I think, you know, we've established some really good rivalries in Burke County, and I hate to see that go away. Again, I think the statement that we would save money traveling, you know, just on the minutes and the mileage, I don't, I don't see that happening.
What, which schools are, are you counting as over thirty minutes?
Well, here, Upper Perk, Phoenixville, Upper Marion, Perk Valley, Sorencourt, Norristown, Mefacton. In Burke County, you have Tulpahoggin, Hamburg, Fleetwood, Conrad Weiser, and Coopstown under thirty, all over thirty minutes. But then you have four that are twenty minutes or less, and that was Burke Catholic being at twenty, I'm pretty certain. Not knowing how to get to these other schools, I don't think Burke Catholic's really twenty minutes away, but according to Google Maps, it is, we'll go with that. I know some qualifying standards in District Three and District One would impact some of our teams, I know that because I coach, so you may be benefiting some programs and you may be hurting other programs.
We, I think we do have some challenges, where Burke County, where we'll set up now, especially for the basketball and football, so there are pluses and minuses, I do have a question, sure. You're set up in sixteen divisions, I assume we would be in one, is there crossover play between the two, or do you have any trouble scheduling the F games?
I'll let the athletic director speak to this, anyway, please.
We do, we do, we do crossovers, that's exactly what we do, we play usually twice in our division, same school enrollments, et cetera, and then we do crossovers so that we maintain those rivalries that we've established throughout the, throughout our history.
For football, you can play crossover games as well?
Football, we, football is a little bit different, we have only one crossover at the end of the season, and what we do with that is we have our non-leagues up front, and then, and football's a different animal. At the end of the, at the end of the season, our one plays one, two plays two, three plays three, however you can maintain your traditional rivalries because of your non-league games. Like, for example, Pots Grove continues to play Leaertown and Mefacton as part of our non-league schedule. So we have four opportunities to schedule those, for example, if Daniel Boone had a rivalry game with Conrad Weiser, they would be able to, that opportunity to schedule one of those first four games with their traditional rivalries.
Do you have any schools, any other schools considering adding, if I'm near any league?
We do have schools that are considering joining right now, we have a, we have, the entire Del Valle League has made application right now to us right as we speak. We have to, we have a meeting tomorrow, and we're gonna, we're gonna discuss that, Daniel Boone, and we have another proposal for a four-school group from the Chesmont that is interested as well. So there are all the things that we have to weigh out as far as...
Anybody leaving?
No.
And would you, would you cap it, or would you expand as far as...
That's gonna be our conversation tomorrow, to be perfectly honest, when we started this process in 2014, we invited nine schools to the, to the... Those nine schools were Daniel Boone, Great Valley, Norristown, Penridge, Quakertown, Radnor, Sauter, Twin Valley, and Upper Marion. Twin Val, or Norristown and Upper Marion obviously have become members, so, you know, that invitation has stayed open for those schools, as well as, there's been some, there's obviously challenges in PI double A with the classification, and that's really been, has been the impetus behind. So we would like to kind of remain a similar type of number right now with our, with our size, we do not want to get too big. That's the short answer.
I have a question for, I guess, Mr. McKnight and Mr. Schmidt. I know we have signed a number of contracts with other schools to continue, you know, to schedule them, and how, I guess the transition is, as these contracts expire, that's when you, that's when you start scheduling into another league, that that's the direction we're going, is, is that correct, or if I'm saying it wrong?
Additionally, I want to add, something else worth to put in, another fine amendment, so to speak, is this conversation with Burke's Football League, where do you want to live? That was really what preempted this conversation. The thought of having our kids on buses in the football season, junior high or high school, from, you know, here all the way over to, you know, Anno Kleona, you know, Cormal Terrace, you know, Lebanon, you know, that's a long bus ride. I mean, we all, previously, we had a number of conversations about this concept of circle, circle model, in terms of scheduling. We're getting out into the western part of Lebanon County, and we are the southeasternmost part of Burke County, so we're talking about long bus rides, and the way that it's been explained to me by the athletic directors from the county, is that that would apply to our junior highs as well. And putting twelve and fifteen-year-olds on a bus for forty-five minutes to an hour would certainly be a concern. The issue of competitive balance, we actually, as a five-A slot veteran in District One, we actually do it in District Three, I know Mr. Dershowitz coaches, but those who have been in athletics a long time, the five-A balance in District Three is much different than the five-A balance in District One. So just something for us to consider, I don't know if it's a right thing for us or not, but I definitely think having kids on a bus for more than an hour to play the junior high, high school football games is a problem.
Like, because the, where I was getting at with my question is, how many, it took, how long would the transition take, how, what's our longer, two, two years? Okay, so it would be in the third year that we could actually do this, so we're talking the twenty-one, twenty-two season would be the first season, right?
Yeah, that's what, that's what the anticipation was, we, we did a two-year transition with Upper Marion and Mefacton when they were pushed, or Norristown when they both recently entered the league.
This is the first I'm hearing that we're, our, the Burke County would be pulled into the Lancaster Lebanon League or merged with it, however you want to say that, so that would be another piece of information is, what is that decision supposed to be made? Is there a timeline on that?
Just a conversation, nothing really, because...
Right, I think the same time.
That's gonna be my question, has it been, is it something that the Burke's League is...
It was just something floated by the, by the leagues, I don't think there's anything, I think the odds are that the Lebanon, the Lancaster League would probably say no, but the conversation was, it was in favor of competition, sorry.
It's been from a couple schools.
What about Mr. Schmidt, you're the athletic director, what do you think?
At this point, I think Lancaster Lebanon is interested, and I think it's more than a fifty-fifty shot of it, so, and that would be only for football. Okay, not for the other sports, so.
So it only, it would impact the, any football team?
Correct, middle school and then high school.
Yeah, I mean, I know there's moving parts in Burke County, you know, with Burke Catholic and them, and how they, the competition in Division Twos for them is, you know, that was part, is that, that was part of what the conversation was, there's Lebanon, Lancaster Lebanon, that's right, because, yeah.
So right now, the only program that the Lancaster-Lebanon League is thinking on making a transition with would be football, but then, we're thinking we should move a conference that would impact every other sporting program at Daniel Boone. Yeah, something we gotta think about, making an impact to benefit one team and...
I don't see, I'm assuming that there, maybe there's, there's, I don't know, NC bowling, bowling on here, boys volleyball, I assume they're just listed or...
That was the 2015, that was really the packet that was, that we used when we did the original invitations out. There has since been bowling added, there's girls volleyball, that's, I think it would be a now conference date for girls volleyball as well.
But that's not for boys.
Not for boys.
Do you, do you have co-ed?
That was excellent, is it co-ed for bowling, do you have, do you have boys and girls?
Yes, yes.
Well, and what would happen with the, with boys volleyball, would that be, would we be, like, it's, it would be our responsibility to go be, like, a free agent and go for a...
Schedule non-league games, similar to like, before we had a, see, a, a group for swimming, we, we had a couple schools in different conferences.
Swimming's not on here either, is it?
Right, so now we have a swimming conference.
Oh, you do?
Yes, we did not before, so.
Boys and girls.
Boys and girls, yes.
So maybe, Mr. Schmidt, if we could provide this of sports that we have, but are not, would not be part of the league, so we understand, you know, what pieces don't quite fit?
Well, at this point, boys volleyball would be the big decision. Yeah, we would have to be in an independent league if we switched.
Well, hockey's not a PI double A sanctioned sport, correct? That's, yeah.
I see.
Can I ask a really dumb question? What, you said we were District Three, is that right, what's that mean?
Well, there, there are twelve districts in the state of Pennsylvania, there's about, it's geographically...
Okay, so that's not any matter of how good we are?
No. Actually, none of, even, even the six-eight classifications really doesn't necessarily mean how good you are, there's some really good teams.
Did you want to ask any cheerleading questions on that side?
I did, I did actually want to ask some cheerleading questions, but it's not PI double A sports, so.
Actually, yes, it is competitive.
We actually, we had a district catch a couple years ago, I was proud of that. This sport, mention the sports that are missing, can do field hockey?
Yes, field hockey. I, I will say that one piece that I did take interest in was, and I think an area where we have weaknesses, definitely in our middle school, our middle school scheduling, I know, sometimes we had a scramble in the past against the game, so hopefully that is positive for us. Am I making a correct assumption there, Mr.?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
And that's one of the things that did attract me to this, this new PAC, is that they do work with the middle school kids, and I know in Burke County, for me, when I, when I lose a game, it's, it's important for me to make it up, and, you know, because those kids, you know, their parents are paying, those kids deserve it. So I know that that's one of the things that we talk about with the PAC, that they're very good at making sure that that happens, and they get their full schedule.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. What bowling is missing from here, is that?
We have it on a limited, not, limited basis, I mean, not every school has bowling in our conference.
I was, I was waiting to see the bowling game come next, if we wanted to check it, so I was, I didn't get on the list here, so. When, when...
I do, but one more, I'm not gonna use this ever. We, our school, currently, our high school is at like, like eleven hundred kids, so would that put us in, as the smallest team in Liberty, or would that be the, I guess, the largest team in front here?
You would have that option. You would have that option. You would have that option to enter like whatever division you are, that swing school.
So I was gonna say, since this is on the, the committee, the whole, are we expecting to be voting on this? I would think that probably from what I'm hearing, we want a little bit more information before we do vote on this. What, what's the voting deadline per se? If we wanted to get, get this in place and, since we have a two-year. May, when are we starting to make, because we're three years out as far as who we're, we're playing?
It sounds like there's a process you have to apply first.
Yeah, you make application. I would say May would be the optimal time so that we can do scheduling down the road, because our scheduler will start preparing schedules.
So you would let me ask you about that?
Yes.
And then obviously then we'd have to vote it in and that would, that would, that's the process works.
Yeah, that process, well, it's just a table like this with every, every school has an equal vote. But I, you know, for whatever it's worth, we initially invited Daniel Boone. We, we were at Crossroads. We were at Crossroads. We were growing. We started, we were all pretty, pretty good. And we, on the Springford, we grew, grew, grew. We're big. We're, our numbers are, we're 960 right now. And those numbers there for the, for the boys side. And you can see our growth. We started running away from some of the other schools and we started having some disparity again. So we had to make a decision. What are we gonna do? We're gonna, we're gonna try to keep this league, league alive, this conference going? And that's when we started. So some of the schools we were looking at, we were trying to bring that, that equity piece back into, back into flag. And we've done that with Upper Marion and McQuillan and Norristown. That's helped for us. And Norristown took a big leap because they're actually in the upper division and they've, they've had some challenges with their athletic programs in recent years. But since they've joined the league, they're very excited. They have an increase of interest with the kids, for whatever the reason. It's just a new, it's almost a new, a little bit new life for some of the schools that have joined with us. So we made a decision. We're either gonna start looking at other things or we were gonna try to grow. We decided to grow, hence the schools that we invited to meet with us.
Well, we do fit in with the mascot on the, on the cup, so. Any other board questions?
One, one more thing. Right now, we're at 456 for boys and 443 for girls. The carpet would be IAA. So that, that would put us at the top at 899 in the frontier division. So that might be good information for you.
But these are all outdated numbers anyway.
Well, they're, they're, yeah, they're.
They're the last round of PIAA numbers. The new ones come into effect for the fall.
For the fall.
Not 2019.
Yeah, well, we shuffled to the top. We passed the quarter.
Can I just say one thing, just regarding travel? I mean, going down, I work in Blue Bell, so going down to anywhere close to Port 22, depending on the time of the day, is like, you know, that's, that's tough, as most of you know. So just a thought. I mean, I, I think the cattle chute should be gone by then, by the time we get in there, but it's, it's just a thought.
I mean, I guess the, the good news is we, we probably drop some of the farmer schools, but keep the closer, like the Exeter, Niflin, you know, pieces in play. And, you know, draft the visors, the, you know, couple hogs and those kinds of.
Directionally to the time of travel.
Yeah.
Directly. East in the morning is not good. West in the evening is not good. Because I've traveled to the same place a lot, so. Might, it might have an opposite effect.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Strobel. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you guys. Good luck.
Any public comments on the Pioneer Athletic Conference?
Hi, Madeline Reno, 367 Buckhead Lane. Uh, I'm a graduate from the 2017 class and a former athlete. And just like hearing that you guys have the opportunity to join the Pac-10 is huge, because I can remember like traveling for districts because I played on the softball team that made it to the quarterfinals in states. It was awesome, but we weren't prepared for it because we played like Parkland and they're a massive school. And I had friends that played in the Pac-10 and getting them to be able to play against like Springford, Beckton, and O&amp;J. They got to prepare themselves for districts because their championship, it, it's huge. Our county's not holding a candle to it. So it would just be like a massive experience for them and it makes me excited for the students that would get to play in it.
Thank you, Madeline Reno.
Thank you.
Anything from Mrs. Lee out there? Well, you, you sent the, you sent the quiz post enough, so. Okay, if there are other public comment, we'll move on to, to finance. So, um, we have some taxes operations on the list. And I guess the big question, I guess, is, I would see, I think we're going over that in finance Wednesday, are we going?
Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday, okay. I did see attached that there, that there, the biz specs, so we have four, four bids, like, right? So there'll be a recommendation coming from the finance committee then regarding that. Any other board questions under the finance portion?
I would like to go back. Was GCA invited? Somebody communicated with them?
Didn't that come out of the facilities meeting?
We started, that came out of budget review, not by review, um, gender review. Gender review.
No, I thought they were out of, out of the facilities meeting. They were, didn't have time or something and they were.
Now, I apologize for early allow of the 10 minutes at the end of the meeting that, that we could start having discussion, but.
Well, I, I guess the question then begs, so this, this actually came up in the gender review. So no one actually invited them? Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
So if, if the question for the board is, would, would the board like to have GCA representatives appear at the board meeting so that board members could ask?
I think the rationale for me asking was that, you know, when we have our facilities meeting, you know, there's the policy meeting, I think, is going on at the same time. So those folks don't get to hear it. And I think, you know, some of the questions we have, it's all great and, and shared some information. I think it would be better to have them come before the full board and to get asked questions. Everyone's hearing the same thing as a response. And I think that's, in fairness to them, I think that would be the better way to go.
I thought they were coming.
Yeah, I agree. I'd like to hear the issues that are on.
Is that what you were asking?
Well, yes, would, would that was the idea.
I wasn't following that. No, I thought they were, I thought they were.
Well, so it was a, it was a tease, or tease on the, tease on the agenda.
So eventually we'll be.
Yeah. Okay, so if we could invite GCA to, to a board meeting, please. Any public comment under the finance section? All right, we'll go on to programs. Uh, so we're looking at June 8th for graduation. That, that assumes no more makeup days, correct?
Yes, correct. If it doesn't snow tonight or tomorrow, we're good.
All right. Well, you can have a delight, but no, no days off.
No more days off.
Um, and then, um, we'll be looking to improve in our next meeting, the Chapter 339 School Counseling Plan. Which was, was that discussed earlier this evening as well, or just, okay, so that was, that was discussed in a previous CNI meeting. There was a separate attachment provided to you folks on the agenda. Any questions on that? Because the folks here, Rob and Dr. Seeger, here to answer any questions we have on that, right?
My question was mandatory.
Well, it, but, but yeah, I mean, we're, we're allowed to. Yeah, I mean, you know, as long as we're complying with, with what the law says, we can, you can develop our own, our own plans around that, so. All right, well, Mr. Strobel, I mean, Mr. Strobel, if you have any questions, that's how we ask them, so. Any public comments on programs? All right. Any presentations by board members, secretaries, correspondents?
Yes, I forwarded to the board and it'll be entered into the minutes, a letter we received from a member of the public regarding Wednesday. Also, I received a letter that I shared with Mr. Harris. It's personnel related. Probably have to discuss that in the executive session. Other than that, there's nothing else to see.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. So Burke's IU, um, actually a bit of a late meeting. We, we did, uh, pass a couple of items of importance. One would be, we did ratify agreement with Jim Jam Therapeutics. They'll be providing some occupational physical speech and parent professional services to the IU Early Intervention Program. We already went out to solicit some new buses. We have some coming off a lease, which actually we're considering purchasing. We also did ratify agreement with, with Pennsylvania, that the IU is providing the technical assistance to define and manage the training, technical support program that's gonna provide monitoring and collection of items regarding the career, the college and career readiness indicators associated with every student succeeds act. That's a mouthful. So the IU will be performing that at work for the state. The IU will also be working with Reading School District to help with doing their learning needs, academic behavioral assessments. And I actually asked that question, Shelley, and said, I said, how, how do, you know, how do they do that? I guess they, Reading actually looks, the IU will be looking at every student in Reading. I guess they just take the data and they go through all the data of every student to see where exactly, to, to give them their unique needs. So I, I kinda asked, I guess, I was kind of curious. I asked when the seeded results, once they, once they do that, so. Thought that was interesting. And, and also just the word, I did ask a question, since the IU has, we have the, yes, transition house. I asked if any of our students were interested in going over there. I guess they, they told you that, or no?
We do it.
We do, okay. So they, because they remember, they said there was, they, we haven't had any there in a while, but that's not, not the case. Okay, so we do have students that go over there to see what's going on and.
Just gather half of it.
Gather half of that. Okay, so that's, that's a good learning experience, isn't it? Yeah, okay. And that was it from the IU. Mr. Wolf, BCTC?
Thank you, Mr. Raffigan. The JOC board met February 28th at the West Campus. It's a fairly, relatively short meeting, with normal personnel approvals to be done. The big item was that the budget was forwarded out of the JOC, so if it hasn't come, it will be on its way to each of the districts. So 16 districts will, will be voting on it, as we will be. So, well, that'll be coming up shortly. I know, have we received it yet, the details from the Grand Tech, not the set budget?
As a reminder, we're meeting over there.
It's next month on the voting meeting in April. But that's, that was it. The next meeting will be the 21st of this month at the East Campus. Any questions? Thank you.
All righty, so, Mr. McKnight, I will say our student representatives have been late this year. Actually, Mr. McKnight?
Indeed, they have.
Where's, where's Mr. McKnight at? He's not in his usual seat. Okay. But you're not gonna find someone as dedicated as, as Ms. Sweet was. That's, I think she was here for every meeting. Uh, Mr. Gerson, anything on the legislative report?
Nothing major, obviously. They're gonna start really getting in on budget talks. But there hasn't been a lot yet, I believe. That's gonna be taken out just from reading different things off of their websites.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gerson. Any public comment on the board presentations?
I have a question. One more thing. Burke City IT hasn't had a meeting since we seated on the board. Then the name is scheduled for the 29th this month. It's gonna be about Richmond, so I hope we can.
Oh, it's actually not at Walton? That's, it's closer, that's good. Okay, thank you. Mrs. Olson?
I have just one question.
Yeah.
In regards to the meeting on the 23rd of April, which is Monday, where do you mean at Burke's career? There's also a facilities committee meeting scheduled that night. Is that canceled?
We haven't felt that far ahead yet, so most likely, go out and see with what Mr. Black and Miller has. If it's, if we have one, it'd be very abbreviated by feeling is that we would postpone it.
Okay. Personnel items. You can see the list there. Any specific board questions? Saying none. Any public comments on personnel items? All right, moving on then to programs. Monthly head count number 4 caps, everybody's enlightenment. Item 12, CNI, there was a meeting earlier. Mrs. Olson, maybe you could borrow a different microphone?
I think you just, I do have a question, comment on head counts. I did notice that two of the fifth grade classes have gone above recommended guidance to 27.
Yes.
Oh, I don't agree with that, but it's something that's certainly concerned about. We continue to grow.
Well, we have students moving in and out every month, and one of the big times of the year is, is in, is in January.
And it's like our fifth grade classes to capacity. They're all 26th and 27th, but I guess that would be the middle school next year.
That's, during the year, well, you'll see in, into this month and April, when the administration brings forward. Okay, that worked. We'll bring forth our staffing recommendations, and particularly for elementary. We try to get the range low to medium for move-ins. Since we've done consolidation or phasing in over the last three years, we now have 10 or 11 sections. So if there's two seats available in each, that's 20 students that we could bring in. Sometimes we'll have a bubble grade. Last year, I think it was fourth grade, that's a little higher. We'll get kids moving in, moving out. So that'll carry forward. So what you'll see for next year, we'll be suggesting a reduction of a second grade section, but an additional fifth grade section. But we'll, we'll do an average class size, and it's an estimate, but we try to make sure that we have enough space to bring students. What we also sometimes have, especially at monogacy with the little ones, we may go below that number, but we can't split that class up and not go over. So, once again, it's a recommended class size, so we try to stay under, and we usually do a pretty good job, but sometimes we'll have a family of five move in. I know when I moved in, we had two, three left, so it's, it's done by grade.
And it does with the fifth grade classes, one level classes.
Yeah. Because fourth grade was, fourth grade was it last year, so as it passes through, and then they go into the middle school.
Any other board questions at the moment? Now, do I, do I sound kinda quiet now? I thought you, thought you. Mr. Mathis, you allowed touch this board over here? Uh, now, Mrs. Olson, CNI.
Okay, we just had a meeting, um, before this meeting. Um, we talked about, um, a program that was presented by.
We talked about a program that was presented by Mrs. Hefter and a teacher from Exeter, I believe. Yeah. And who started the program and has expanded, is extending it to other schools. For teachers in the parks, it'll help, if we go with it, it'll help bring our teachers where the kids are during the summer months to help prevent some vaccine. The presentation that was given to me, I have some of the monetary costs. It looks like there is a grant that we are trying to, we have applied for through United Way. We won't know until later in the month, but we should announce before our next meeting. If we've received it, then the rest of it would be funded from a Title I grant and student fees. So, it would be, if we can get that Canadian way grant to be sub-funded for the first year, and then we'll have to see what we have in the future years, because everything is grants, except for the students will be expected to pay something for that during the summer. I have that information for you, or if you'd guess wherever else you want. So, Mrs. Hefter was really excited about the program, and I think it sounded really good that we agreed that we would like to wait to see if the United Way grant works on it, and then if we're to, for this, it would be, we are fairly certain it would be happening at the Maple Springs school in Tulsa, somewhere. They're trying to work out some of the details that will happen. So, that was one thing to talk about. We talked about iPads, continuing discussion on the product of iPads. And Mr. Matt gave us a little bit more detail about some things we discussed, both at the Technology Committee meeting and the previous CNI Committee meeting, about the insurance, how the insurance and replacement process would work, based on input from other schools that use Apple products, and security for what kids would be allowed to use, what safeguards for approved usage that we would have. We didn't talk much about timelines. That's, timelines are kind of dependent on a lot of other things, so. But, of course, we are intending to give iPads to kids in high school by the end of the year. We talked about AP. Mr. Hurley said that some of our retirements this year, we're going to need to build in some AP training to continue offering AP courses and certain classes. He said that he does have that built into his own budget, so it would be an additional expense, but he just wanted me to be aware of that. And as we had, I passed on to you, to the rest of the board, the administration has written up on the chair in this Assembly guidance that it's not, it's not a policy for us at the moment, but they just pretty much, as we asked them to do at the last CNI meeting, they just pretty much replied with, "Great," that they were already doing things.
So, I do have a quick CNI question, I don't know if you discussed it or not, but I know there was the comment that Mr. Wolf had, and Mr. McKnight can clarify, but so with the, with the process for Wednesday, with the nationwide walkout deal, so, Mr. McKnight, are the, anybody that does not want to participate is not being forced to go outside and then come back inside, right? Is that they can stay in the classroom and those who want to participate will go out to the football stadium, is that correct?
So, currently, we're, the events are going to take place indoors, because of the weather. I'm not sure if anyone wants to be out.
Okay, so you'll be indoors.
Do sit in or go out, but in this case, it's going to be inside. Secondarily, academic program, we can teach as is.
So, anybody that wants to participate then will go where?
Students, this is a student, you know, certainly at Memphis, students are doing a design, I think, something that is, lets their voice be heard. I think it's important, in my opinion, that we respect young people and help them develop their voice, and to that degree, there are lots of students who want to be heard. So, what is it, when I ask them, what is it that they want to have heard? They want us all to know as adults that they want to be kept safe, and they also want to take time to reflect on their decisions while they have lives to follow. Those are the two prominent points. You know, my recommendation to them is that if they took a political stance, that they'd lose their voice. Really, when we worked through it together, they told me, what we're really saying, Mr. McKnight, is we trust you guys as adults to keep us safe, and that's the word, and that's what we want to put out there. So, that's exactly what they're saying. We're not talking about how we ought to keep them safe, but that we ought to keep us safe. So, hopefully that gives you a more clarification.
I am not disagreeing with the, I understand, you know, that their prime, primary concern is obviously, as it bears on them, is exactly keeping them safe is correct. So, obviously, they should have a voice in that. Now, you know, you could say, you know, gun control is part of that. You could also say maybe that maybe having, bringing prayer back into school is the way to do it, because maybe religion is the way to help people out, you know, dichotomies on this. But my concern is if a student does not want to participate in this, that they're not being forced to do so.
Correct, nor have they ever been. It has never been part of the discussion that they can be forced to do it. So, I know sometimes the rumor mill's rampant, but that has never been part of the discussion. Student academic program was always and is going to continue during that time.
So, who then will actually be supervising the folks that are, since teachers are still teaching, right?
Well, and we have 25 teachers volunteers that crosscarve and sat against their prep times, gave up their prep timing, and were there lunchtime. That is their choice as well. Security guards and administration will be supervising.
Okay, fair enough. Any other board questions on your CNI? Any public comments? Okay. Anything from facilities, Mr. Wolf?
Yes, I feel proud, I love my notes from the meeting at home, so just to ask Mr. Blanken Miller, who was fine enough to just send me this now, the agenda. Casey, I don't recall any, anything that really jumped out as far as the project, I know the lighting project that you were talking about, lighting upgrades. That was, I know there was a payback timeframe, and there's rebates. Was that, was that an AMI, if I recall, or what was that? That was one of the topics you were talking about a while.
Yeah, the Avenue Elementary, Gymnasium, light, light, light and upgrade, Monogacy Elementary upgrade, and Middle School. MEDA still has money available for the rebates. PP, yeah, PPNL is now broke on their rebates, but MEDA has plenty left. So, we definitely want to get these upgrades completed prior to MEDA not having any left. So, we're starting to have failures of a lot of faulty valves in those locations. Every time we have a day failure, it's a lift rental, which is $500 to $1,000, $1,000 for two or three days. So, we get a lift in there, get everything replaced with LEDs, and then we're done for years.
We did talk about the River Rock lease for a while. I think we were discussing the last thing, the direct energy gas procurement. That was through the IU, if I recall. Is that, okay, did get that right. So, that, and then we, like I said before, we ended up the meeting, the last 10 minutes or so, with Mike Burns, who was an attendance from GCA, making our opinions, had, were. I did, he did send us a presentation, which I forwarded to all of you based on, you know, the comments, and of course, everything with a long, wide angle lens from a distance looks really good. We merged it in the close-up detail, what our teachers are talents, administrators continually put on our, Mr. Harris's report that we all get during the weekend. So, I felt that we were fair, so discussing it amongst ourselves, and we would invite Mr. Burns to a board meeting, and we could ask questions directly, and we would all hear the same answer. As I said, this is, we start off with one individual, we have a second individual, and now Mr. Burns is in the picture. With each change, or someone from their corporate office coming, it's been a reemphasis on getting it done, and a couple months later, you know, we come back and we're still having the same discussions. So, we'll make sure we invite him, and we'll get him to the, you know, committee the whole way through next month, the voting meeting with them.
If I can ask a GCA question, then I, so this will prove, Mr. Nor, that I do read the weekly reports about the toilet paper at AEC. Is that, is that being rectified?
We haven't had any clogs in the last four or five days, so whether it's been rectified or not, good question. It definitely isn't the highest quality sherman.
Well, so, okay. I mean, obviously, we're not ordering supplies anymore, but if that, if that indeed, I don't know, Mr. Blankenbauer, that was the case of the clogs or not, but obviously, if that's the case, we probably like it that. Hold on, switch it up, right?
Just one more thing to add. If you're not aware, the Travel Vietnam Memorial Wall is coming to the high school these, the weekend, July 4th. The local Birdsboro Women's Aid Gallery, I believe, is, is sort of spearheading that. Mr. Gerson wants to add anything to that, he's had a lot of conversations as well, but it is, it is coming and is confirmed.
Yeah, it's going to be July 58th. I'm sure the school district's going to be getting to thank you, but I know the Legion and the veterans are thankful that you're allowing it to happen there at the high school. It's going to be a good event. It's a great event for veterans. There's actually veterans counselors on site, veteran troops on site. It's staffed and manned 24 hours during that time period. On its way in, it actually gets escorted in by, I think, 300 veteran motorcycle riders. And as it comes through the different municipalities, different police departments pick it up, so, and fire departments that have come in with quite a bit of motorcycles and everything. So, appreciate the school district being willing to have that up at the high school and the good location.
Should we prepare for a junior ROTC presentation to do an event tied to that?
They, they should. They weren't consulted when I was approached by the law folks.
Yeah, there is a, for next month, we'll have on the agenda that normally uses a structure, anyone using our building's grounds and so forth. So, we, we recommend now our committee that that be weighed, just to memorialize it and, and then board document that we voted on it to be consistent. So, we'll see that next month.
Now, while you're, since you brought that up before, my memory escapes me, but, you know, I, we used to get a list of events using our facilities, right, didn't we? Whether it was a fee attached or not, I don't recall seeing that recently. My imagination, I don't know.
At least have some that are using it, and for a fee or not fee, and not that the amount wasn't important, just whether it was a fee or not.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing that recently.
Okay, yeah, that was, we could put that back on. That was informational.
Yeah, it was just informational, I understand. But certainly, every now and again, something came up which didn't quite make sense, so that'd be great if we could get that back in our agendas. Any board questions on facilities?
Yes. Do we have any update on the use of this facility as far as expansion?
With River Rock? No, not as of right now, no.
So, is that, is that completely, is it done, there to stand as is?
As of right now, yes.
I have a question in regards to GCA. Is there any way that we can prepare some questions ahead of time and send them down to him? I mean, I certainly think there's a lot of questions that come up, having come here and everybody tired of things that are wrong with the building at him and not having the opportunity to prepare. I'd see, I'd prefer to see him prepare, and then that way we can have more meaningful conversation with him while he's here, maybe come up with a process that would be corrected. Or let them come up with the process in the meantime, so they can present that at the same time. Does that make sense?
I think that's, that's a good suggestion. I'll be the plain person for that, so if you have, anyone has questions that we can share with Mr. Burns in preparation for his meeting here, we'll send it to him and give him a chance to provide whatever documentation or response he wants to give. Good idea.
Casey, can we get an update if he comes to the next meeting, like before, like, you know, a walk around the building or something like that? Because obviously, even since our last meeting with him, it seems like there's still issues that he hasn't fixed, right?
Correct. I can definitely do a walk around and kind of assess each, each facility as I did a while ago. Some buildings are good, some buildings are not. You know, it's kind of a status quo at each, at each school.
Would it be, would any board member be interested in picking a time that board members could accompany Mr. Blankenbauer and see firsthand?
I'm not here Thursday and Friday this week, but I will be more than willing to walk anybody around any time of day, even on the weekends if we need to, you know, I know everybody's busy, so let me know, and I can take, take, take on a tour.
Last week, Mr. Blankenbauer took me on a tour of AEC. It took about an hour and a half, and it was very informative.
We can, I mean, besides looking at facilities, I mean, certainly, you know, in the past, the board has had, were meetings at different schools. That is, maybe make it easier for folks if they want to, we could set up having a meeting at one of the schools. And that way, you could tour the facility if you have any questions. I know there's always, there's still lingering questions about, you know, class size and issues about where we can and can't fit kids, besides the actual state of the actual facility itself.
Makes sense to ask the teachers to participate, so if the rest is just, we're not walking into the building, or if age protection is good, if they're in the building every day, maybe present some of the ongoing issues that they have, that they could put together, file, present them to this company, and then they can come up with suggestions how to fix it versus, you know, one or two, maybe cobwebs on.
I'm sure Mrs. Davis would relish having input on what lacking in the GCA, right?
So, if we're interested in a tour, then Casey, we just didn't email you.
That's fine.
Is that the time, is that correct?
Yeah, just if you would, just copy the rest of the board, so if you have a time that works for you, and I see that you're responding like, "Hey, I can do that," so we're not taking Casey away from what's going on today, so.
And maybe a couple... You just want to walk around, right?
I got nothing, but... I have a long action in Pittsburgh, Thursday to Sunday, for this weekend, so. My coach, Mullenberg, bowling, so we're out of the States, so I'll be home for the four days.
Yeah, I won't be able to do it this week. If we have next week, or at least before our voting meeting, that would be a good, good time to get in before.
Any other board questions, comments for facilities? Public comment? Mr. Wolf, finance, I know we have a workshop coming up Wednesday. I'm not sure if there's anything else you can add?
No, with the, I would like to discuss with the board while we're all present here, and I did run the idea by Mr. Small, and spoke briefly about it with Mr. Rathke.
I haven't had a chance to talk to the six yet, but you said you're hearing it. If there would be any interest from, you know, from your, somebody from your side, from the union side, to, to sit in with our, our committee in the budget meeting, so you're going to get the same information that we're getting? Because what we're seeing and what I'm hearing is alternate facts, wrong information, and I don't want to have that situation where we're getting, we have one piece of information, somebody's coming to you with something different, and then this mistrust builds up. I want to avoid that, have one set of numbers that we're all looking at and that way whoever the representative would be able to ask questions and, and ask the administrators questions about the budget and then we all can move forward with it. So because I'm hearing, you know, what something's going to cost, is this, but it's, it's not even close to what it really costs or tax revenue that we may or may not receive on something, that's not even close to reality that we, that we understand. So we want to make sure that as we're developing our budget, we can do it together.
Is this coming Wednesday?
If, if, if it's possible, then I'll just start on Wednesday, yes.
Make it, make it free, whoever, right?
Whoever you want to grant, whoever, you know, whoever has a Wednesday night training. And it would be better if that same person then would be the one that kicks anyone right into the, that would be for every finance meeting we have, if we have another budget meeting, that we want to schedule that.
I'll stop to ask if he might be there or there.
Okay. But, yeah, so Wednesday will be the, the entire board, the, the idea will start to really get into the budget. I thought we're making a lot of decisions, but we're starting, the pitch is starting to come together. We want to talk to the administrators about their budgets, have them explain, you know, what, what the things are important, why they're in there, just so you can get an idea of, you know, the, the things that are normally in the budget. We also asked Mr. Schmidt for a breakdown also. I know he's pretty busy, but it's a, it's a large piece of, of our budget as well, so. So we'd like to get an idea, I know you had, at least in the activity committee, where Mr. Rathke's committee, you had a replacement schedule. We just want to make sure if we're, what that replacement schedule is, if we're adhering to it. We don't want to front load a lot of uniforms and so forth as an example, so we'd like to see what the details of, of that, of that budget is. So if you would provide that to Ms. Haynes and Mr. Small, if you have preparation for our, our budget meeting. So, and if we do have to, this is advertised as a voting meeting, so if we do have to make decisions, we can, but that's not necessarily the purpose of what these meetings.
Looking forward to a good time, Mr. Wolf.
It always is. You'll be running it since you're the president.
Okay. Any more questions, comments for Mr. Wolf on finance? Public comment? Policy review, Mr. Scott?
So we will be voting two weeks on these first and second readings, second reading building effect. So if you have any questions on them, best chance, speaking out of our own peace, we can make changes. But that's, the, the second reading items are going to get voted on, on demand, unless we need some, you know.
I have a, a question on the first, one of the first reading items, Mr. Scott.
Yes, evaluation of employees?
No, no, actually, policy number 318, penalties for tardiness.
Yeah.
Basically, there's nothing there. It says superintendent can assess penalties, but there's no, I mean, nothing, it's very negligible.
Yeah, oddly enough, we spent a good amount of time talking about this one, even though there was almost nothing there, and I think that was the whole point, was that why is there even a policy? Because essentially, tardiness is handled at the, at the building level and obviously you don't need a policy to tell people.
But shouldn't we have a, shouldn't we have a set, so that, you know, one, so that AEC is the same as MEC is the same as the high school? I mean, shouldn't there be, that says you're allowed to miss, if you're late three times, you get a verbal or, you know, something?
I mean.
I thought we said this would be a topic over the policy, didn't we?
Can we talk about that?
Yeah, we had discussed, maybe it didn't.
The policy is that the administration handles it.
Yeah.
And then we establish guidelines.
I believe that's the unwritten policy, but I love that.
Which is also part of your yearly review, is your attendance and your professionalism, so it's actually negated, doesn't even matter.
Okay. Well, then, yeah, I'd say, why do we even, why are we even wasting our?
I guess the point is to say that the, the policy is that the administration handles the policy, that we don't dictate it.
I feel like a dog chasing his, his tail right now, so this.
I guess if someone, a member of the public has a question about tardiness, then we'll see that it's handled at the building.
Okay, all right.
Sometimes less is more.
Sometimes less is more.
Sometimes none has done it.
Any other board questions besides tardiness? Any public comment? Okay. Technology committee meeting, Mr. Miller, we had a initial one.
Yes, we did. We had, we had a brief initial meeting where we talked about the stakeholders and Form 15. Basically, looking, we scheduled the next meeting and ongoing meetings will be on the first Tuesday, the Monday, the next one will be April 3rd, start to have a fully meeting where we get in and look at, connect with plans, want bits of detail around the, the infrastructure, some of the infrastructure planning and the one-on-one technology plans. Kind of just, I, we've heard a lot of things and Dr. spoken, like to see the document, take it down, give it a full class in place, looking to do that, not only with the IPAD, but also with some of the software selection and coming to Jones, a plan to, to move forward with different software packages. A lot of the, the question discussion did, and everything, so we'll be able to get a clear picture of what we're talking about coming out of the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any more questions, comments for Mr. Miller? Public comment? Not if you left that, Mrs. Albright, transportation committee.
We did not need last month, I'm not feeling this, so, and we promised to be quick with the budget.
Okay, very good. So transportation meeting before the budget meeting this Wednesday. Any public, or sorry, any board questions for Mrs. Albright? Public comment? Old business, we have minutes, any more questions on the February 26th minutes that were attached? Any public comments? New business, we received an email from PASBA about them performing a board self-assessment. Mr. Wolf, I don't recall us doing one of these before.
I was struggling trying to think of doing this before also.
Yeah, it, it, it came up towards August, September, and we had talked about waiting for the new board to come on board, to be elected, to do a self-assessment. It basically, it's basically the SWOT analysis, your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and show, tells the board's inner workings on how we, how you all communicate, work together, your roles, opens up that discussion and how to do it better. So it came up in the fall of last year, but since that board was the outgoing board, it was something that was kind of put on the back burner. And now that the new board is in place, it's come up again. Also, the B is also through the PSBA on new school, well, on school board member training. They had made an offer to come here with our questions to do it in-house, instead of having to go someplace else and do it online, now that it's mandatory. The law was in flux back in the fall also, but now that it's passed, that's something that we could do, or you all could do, or I'm there too, together with our unique questions and concerns, they would come here. So the woman who was at Amity last year, when Dane had the band play last year, would be the group that comes in and does it, they offered last year.
We've been doing the same training, I've attempted in the department.
Right, but just not in a large group and we can ask individual concerns of Boone Board in our area.
It's very short out together.
Are you saying that they're combining these two together, is that what I'm hearing or no? That's, I'm not, did I interpret that incorrectly?
It, it could be combined together, because they're going to come here, we can ask questions. And once there's an online self-assessment that has to be completed, then they would take that, and I would think that.
Did they say how long that roughly usually takes to?
No.
Is that assessment, is that something each board member does individually? I just don't remember ever doing this before. Now, you mentioned that due member you're talking about, and we decided to wait for the new board and see, I don't recall us ever doing it before.
I, I don't, I don't recall that, no. I, I think this is included in our dues, correct?
Yes, yeah, there's no extra charge for it, and I'm looking online, it's Myla Hayes is our representative, she was the one who was at Amity, and she's the one I was talking to about this, but once again, waiting for the new board to be assessed.
So it's something that we don't have to do, but it's offered to us, so.
It's all part of training, PD for the board.
You guys can think about it, if you want to.
One thing I did want to say is the, the training. I was busy the day that they were scheduled to put this down, so I actually have.
So, yeah, who, who did not, who did not get to the training?
Not that you should let that impact whether or not you guys will sit through it and I will find it somewhere else, if you don't want it, but it'd be nice to over here.
So, Mrs. Albright, Mrs. Olson, Mr. Scott, did you get to the training or?
Oh, yeah.
You did, okay.
Oh, yeah.
So it's, Mr. Deroso, did you go? You did not, okay, so Mr. Deroso, Mrs. Olson and Mrs. Albright are the ones that you need to do it then, okay.
Is that the initial cost?
No.
I need a lot of training. Aaron needs a lot of help.
I mean, not that it's required, existing board members don't have to go through it, is there?
No.
They want to go through a law material.
Mr. Scott, might be beneficial for you to go through it again, though.
I don't know, maybe it's time. It's any consolation, what I had to do that day wasn't any fun.
Like, like, had to be board president or something.
I did have a question about the all-access pass, too. Is that something that, and they mentioned that there's a website that we have access to, do you have other user IDs or, it seemed like there was interest in figuring out that we had access to this administration or companies' IDs, or it wasn't clear what exactly what you would be all-access type.
I'll check with my assistant, because she usually sets everyone up on the passes and everything, username.
Any other word, comments or questions on that training that's being offered to us? Self-assessments, any public comment?
Are we moving on to passing your business?
Well, I have a, I have a couple of items to, that are not, not, that is, that are not in the agenda, I need to get out, so I'll, I'll get mine out and then you can go ahead. I, I did have a question for administration. I noticed on Shelley's report, so we're, we're not doing a, we have a gifted.
Yes, so we're going to be compliance monitoring.
Audit, is that the?
Yes, yes. This is the first one since I've been here and probably next year will be out for the special education compliance monitoring, but they give months, they give it up, this, I got the email and probably right when I wrote down the order for it, and there's a ton of work that needs to be finished before they come on site on the 24th. They want the facilitated self-assessment a month out, but he understands, he didn't give me a whole lot of time, so he'll cut me a break, I guess, timeline on that, but it's a lot of work.
I just, you know, my question was, were we shifting any resources to help Shelley out, was my, my question, if that was the case? Is there a discussion on that with administration or not?
If she asks, she gets.
Does she need help? She has to.
The special education plan is due by April 1st, it has to be in public view for a month. So both of those things in the next three weeks.
Yeah, I, I know sometimes some, some money is attached to what Shelley does, that's what makes sure that we don't get muffed up in that as well and, so I guess it's going to be a conversation amongst the administration whether that, you know, we should be shipping some resources to help Shelley out or not.
Sounds like the answer if she was asked would be.
Yes, clearly.
Sounds like there's a question here.
I didn't embarrass you, you looked a little red over there.
Absolutely not, I'll take all the help I can get.
Okay. And then I also wanted to bring up, you know, we, we had the, this, the drug search on Friday, which is the surprise lockdown in the buildings, and there was a lot of public comments and concerns and out there on social media and, and all that, and maybe Mr. Harris can speak more to that, but I, I will say that because it was not a scheduled event, I think there were quite a few things that we did learn and were addressing in the district that were perhaps deficiencies in, in our program, so I think that was a positive to the, to the drill. I will also say that my personal opinion, I was glad to see that we did, did have the dogs come in. I think the odds of some of our kids and I, I think most of us in this room, or at least quite a few of us know some past Boone kids or, or that have OD'd on drugs. It's a very large problem in, in Pennsylvania, the county, and it's something that we need to be addressing. I think the, unfortunately, the odds of one of us knowing a, a child being killed by drugs is a lot higher than, than, than God forbid, someone comes into our schools to, with a gun to, to shoot somebody. So I was glad to see that, that we did have that, that piece in play. Now, from, you know, a conversation I had with, with Mr. Harris, my personal opinion was that for future, if there is a surprise lockdown, that we should have, that we should be ready to roll out a statement to our website in a, in a shortest period of time that it was just a drill and that there is not an actual emergency taking place, so that parents are not panicking and the texts aren't going back and forth between kids and parents and, and not knowing what's going on. So, yes, I do, I do think we should, we should have a surprise drill, but I also think we should be ready to communicate in the shortest period of time possible that it was not an emergency and it was just a, a drill that was being, happening. So those were, those are my thoughts on that, I know the word A, where I sent some comments on that.
I have a couple of questions. The communication part of it was a little off. So it was a joint search and lockdown drill, is that, because I saw that some first communication was just a search and, and a search and lockdown, it seems like that's what it was. If so, I question, was it doing them together? I think they're both great things to do, I think a surprise, a surprise element's good, mixing them together, you have, the kids are used to the drug service the way that they have been, and they've been locked in, they're not locked down, so I think that's some confusion and anxiety that they have.
The, the action took place between me and the sheriff's department. No one else knew about it. I told Rob maybe the day before, then we had the snow, which was a delay, so the sheriffs, we moved it to Friday. We didn't tell anyone. I wanted to see how the principals and the office staff would react. We've done a number of drills, lockdown, fire drills, evacuation, and from my feedback was it was kind of a joke. They, they walked through it, and when we do a fire drill, we say, okay, we're going to do a fire drill at 9:05, 3, 2, 1, go! We hit the stopwatch and everybody marches out, they line up, they laugh, they have a fun time. We all know, if you've ever been in a fire, it's not like that. We also know in lockdown, so we've gone through lockdown training for the last, well, since I've been here, the last few years, and this time with the sheriff's department's cooperation, they wanted to, I, I asked them to bring the dogs through and they volunteered. I was at the Reading Court House and I ran into a sheriff in, in the hallway and I said, you guys do drug searches? And they said, yeah. I said, okay, I'm in Berks County, can you work with us? Made a few phone calls, they agreed right away. Then decided to do all, to do. Then decided to do also do a practice lockdown, unannounced. I walked into the school, middle school first at, I want to say nine o'clock, maybe ten, nine o'clock, and said, lock the building down. And while the dogs were searching, I checked doors. And I could tell you from the sheriff's response, the middle school did excellent. They couldn't find the kids. They asked where the kids were. Every door was locked that I checked, some lockers, the dogs keyed on, but there was no illegal drugs found. Then we moved on to the high school. The high school, oh, I did, we did not bring helicopters to the middle school. It just happened to fly overhead when we rolled up. We did not tell the high school, so the high school was not locked down when I went to the middle school, it was building by building. I walked in first because the dogs had to prepare, went to the high school counter, said, lock the building down, we're bringing the dogs through, find the principals. What I was looking for was how did the office staff know where the principals were? How fast they could contact them? How fast they could secure the building? And we did learn some things and it took a few minutes for, the way the dogs work, they have to bring something in to, like to turn the dogs on to, okay, you're about to work. So that takes about two, three minutes, they do that. There was three dogs, five officers, five deputies, I guess. And then we agreed to each search with Preston, Swaber and I, we all agreed to take the sheriff's officers to a part of the building to expedite it. I did upstairs and while I was up there, while they were, the dogs were checking the lockers, I was checking doors. And I found some doors unsecured. I opened the doors and I said, hey, you should lock your door, shut it. One door was locked but not closed. I said, it's a good idea to close your door when you lock it. And then we moved to other areas of the building and I continued to check and I found one other door that was unlocked and I asked the teacher, you should lock your door. She goes, I forgot to check it. So those are all things that in a real situation, we would be in trouble with. If you're estimating, you know, 20 students per room plus a teacher, that's a risk. We also noticed some other things with the outside doors. They weren't secured completely. People could still come in and out, that's a problem. Communication, do we answer the phones, do we not answer the phones? So custodial staff, how are they used? Those are all things that we can look at. Now, I know and we all know, if something happens, most likely, say it's a gunman, isn't going to walk into the office and say, hi, please shut down your building, I'm about to do something in here, but I did it that way. So there has been suggestions to test it by putting a stranger in the building with a red cap and having the sheriff officers or police officers look for that person, walk through the halls and how do we, you know, secure the building. What I did was just a simple, there was gym in session right before lunch, a regular school day, lock this building down. How fast can we get it done and how securely can we get it done? High school did really well, don't get me wrong, they did really well. Sheriffs were very happy and one of the sheriff's officers said to me on the way out, they said, you know, we sometimes get lost in high schools or schools and hospitals because they're not familiar. So it helped for them to walk the building and learn it. So it was a learning on both sides. Did I mean to cause any strife for anyone to make kids upset? No, not at all. I mean, my son, my own son texted me 14 times saying, what's going on? I didn't respond. I drove to school in the morning, didn't tell him. My daughter's in sixth grade, she didn't text because they're not allowed to use their phones at the middle school, but the high school, all the texts went out saying, what's going, what's going on? I wanted them to feel, this is something's going on, we have to check the halls. And I wanted to make sure that the building was secure on a regular day, not a pre-announced, we're going to do a lockdown and kids are in the corner laughing, texting, joking. I wanted them to not be afraid because we just had all firecrackers or smoke bombs that has been suggested, but to make people realize that we had a sub, didn't have a kid. And so after that, came back to the office, sent out a connect ed call and an email to staff, what was done. At the end of the day, the principals and I and administrators all sat down, had an after-action review to discuss what happened and how we could do it better. So to me, it was a success because we saw some successes, but we saw some gaps too, which are concerning, but those gaps that we saw are easily fixable. So to me, it was pretty much a success.
As part of the lesson plan was the pack of communication for 45 minutes or so after the public board, was that taken as a lesson or not?
We were still in the building. We were still doing the search. I left the high school at about 10:45, got back here by 10:50. I set the connect call up at 11:00, it was set to go at 11:15. Preston did his set for 11:00 because I did it at, I didn't want to delete his, I saw his was going out, so I set mine up 10 minutes, 15 minutes after, his went out. His was going out to high school, mine was going out to middle school and high school, to everyone. So it was set up and then got with Scott Matts, when I wrote it up, he put it out on social media and then it takes a little, there's a little gap to submitting it out and I sent an email out to all staff.
Finding a door unlocked when nobody's in the building with a gun is a lot better. There's anxiety, obviously, in the process of finding out that a door don't lock. I have all the other, I mean, I'm on the other side of it, my way to get the facts not knowing if it is and I had a different opinion up till now, thank you for sharing. Well, you can't announce that, so testing a plane, I want to find out if a plane engine fails on the ground, not when it's in the air. I want to find out if the door's not locked or if nobody in the building, versus when somebody's-
To Mr. Milgrove's point though, my, my suggestion is to have, it was a surprise, but communication could have been prepared in advance and then immediately sent out and, you know, so that communication could be faster.
I agree with the communicating to the parents that once it's out, that there's not somebody in the building for 45 minutes, a lot of things, I agree with that. I'm just saying, I didn't realize there was so many good things that were a result of that.
And I also, I also put the results of the drug search, I couldn't do that until, trust me, we were concerned that when the dogs started going after certain lockers, what we were going to find, but one of, we didn't find anything. Illegal.
How long were they, if you need to build it, how long were they on the full lockdown?
Got to the middle school at nine, I would say maybe five minutes after I got there. We were out by nine for, so about 35 minutes at the middle school. High school was bigger. Got there at 10:00. I was back, about 45 minutes still, yeah, because I got back around 10:45, sent stuff to Scott to post, wrote up to connect ed, did the email, then set up the connect ed. Took about five minutes to write to connect ed and get all that set up. I saw the press and already had one in queue for 11:00, so I set mine up for about 11:10, 11:15 to go out. So about 45 minutes total. Then after it was over, I did talk to the sheriffs outside for about two or three minutes. They took the dogs out, we talked a little bit, laughed, so about 35 minutes at each location.
For lockdown.
I had my first text at 9:46, sorry, about 45 minutes later. But just, the kids are going to text, but it's a difficult situation, they're going to text whether something's going on and if there's something is going on, they're going to be texting back to us.
Well, the sheriff's officers were driving, I think, three large black SUVs, they said K-9 units, three or four, and when we rolled up to the school, you could tell, it looked like a SWAT team was showing up. That's why I think when the helicopter buzzed overhead, they thought it was an aerosol going on and they came in full gear with the dogs.
No, is that standard protocol, well, when they bring the dogs in, they only check lockers? Because I don't think any of us are not even actually with our own thoughts on this.
They check the locker rooms, the lockers, we don't check vehicles. That's off-site technically. Yeah, anything in a locker.
But what if the bat, like, on their person?
No, the students do not come in contact with the animal. That's why it was a locker.
How to search the kids, right?
Well, no, when they're separate, so it's too, 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 I'm not talking about like anytime you do a K-9 search.
They don't sniff kids.
Always do a lockdown at the same time.
The kids are put in the rooms. They don't sniff the kids. You don't want these dogs sniffing the kids.
No, I don't, but I do want them sniffing their bags, like, I don't, and, you know, you don't always have your bag in a locker, like, kids keep their drugs on theoretically, statistically.
The dogs check the locker rooms and they check the lockers, but they did not come in contact. We did have a backpack that was questionable that we pulled out, but that was something found not illegal. Against policy, but not illegal. It was a vape pen.
Any other board comments?
Can I say something? So, sorry, Mike. So one of my questions is, and it's regarding the middle school, they have a policy with no cell phones. I just happen to know a couple guys who do this for a living and they deal with it, you know, my background there, but that's one of the easiest ways for the kids to be less distracted. They can go in a corner, they have their cellphone, they can now text their parents. It takes their mind off of things because like, my two kids in the middle school, obviously were not allowed. The teacher was forbidding, I guess someone next to my daughter with a cellphone to text her parents. That's like a, that should be like corrected because, I mean, at least, I'm not telling you, but at least what I've heard from experts, that is an issue. And these guys don't have the cell phones, my daughter wanted to reach out. Now, the high school, you got your point across and I think it's great because my kid, my son, senior, you know, he's an athlete and everything, he was scared out of his mind. He had a teacher with a bat at the door, the bat at the door. I mean, they were, that's how serious they, they took it, and if that was your goal, I get it and I, I think I commend you for that, but it just, I just think the middle school cellphone, I think they're, I think that's naive to think that they don't have cell phones and they don't, my God, my, you know, my seventh grader, you know, he's using the cellphone and everything else. I'm just, I don't know if that's something that, for another day, maybe you guys handle that a bit up, obviously, but I'm just saying.
I think your son and my son may be in the same class because he told me the bad story also.
Oh, okay.
We did discuss the cellphone use in the middle school after, when we reviewed what happened and we were going to discuss it because the rule in the middle school is, they have certain times of the day they could use the cellphone, but the rule is no cell phones. And my daughter's in sixth grade there and she said, no, no cell phones, but we feel that at the high school, well, if you have a phone, it's better to text your parents and let them know it's okay. So that's something that we discussed because like, my daughter will keep it in her locker, not on her person, because she's not allowed to use it, but when they go through her locker, they could get a quick text in. So that's something we discussed at the review with the principals and administrators of the buildings, what we can do going forward. And that's all just professional development, educating staff on what we should do. So that's something that came out.
I mean, isn't the concern of having cell phones, that they make noise? Someone's calling, there's, you know, there's sound coming from the cell phones, that we alerted someone that there's people in there?
Point.
I'm on the fence with the whole cellphone thing and the texting and the, like, did anyone, did anyone, any of the kids that were scared out of their minds dial 911?
I don't know.
Did any of them call the police? Like, what, I mean, to me, the first call should have been to the police and then to my parents. Like, I don't know what your parents are going to do because they're not, obviously not there and I get it, like, that's just the world we're in, but again, I go back and forth with it, but, you know, it's-
That's a good point.
I'm just saying, like, if you're, you know, and the, what I heard from several teachers was that they thought it was real. So, you know, that was the point, you know, I get it, I think it's great from that perspective. I think it's, I, again, as a parent, I would certainly, probably bug me that my kid was sprained and whatever, but I think if you sit down and let it digest for a little bit, you realize it's probably for the best, you know, like, if this is real, what's going to happen? So, but I don't know, like, I, the whole cellphone thing is a little, I don't know that I agree that everyone should have free use of their cell phones in an emergency. Like, I think in an emergency, the only person that has any say about anything is the teacher. Like, when you're in that classroom, like, the teacher's the boss, they should be making the decisions and they should be, they should be, and they should have protocols to know what they're supposed to do in those events. They should have some type of training. And if they, if there's a moment where they say, go ahead, everyone text your parents, fine, but like, to just, I think it's a mistake to just have, all right, you know, smoke them if you got them, like, anyone grab your, grab your cellphone, do whatever you want, kids are playing games or something, who knows? Like, I just wouldn't, I don't think that's a good idea personally, so.
Yeah, but I think you're talking about two different things here. I mean, I think if the teachers are in control, that's one thing, they can tell their kids not to be on their cellphone. 99% of our kids text anyway, so who calls anybody? I mean-
Well, my point is, that is my point, that, that, those kids are texting whether a teacher said to do it or not, or, like, did anyone, you know, are they, they putting all their phones on silent? Are they, like, whatever? I'm just, my point is, I, as much as I would want my own kid to text me, probably, I also understand that I don't know that it's the best idea to have 20 kids in a room, just do whatever the hell they want with their phones.
I have one in each school and I can tell you that the one that did text me made me feel a whole lot better because she didn't know what was going on because they couldn't get a hold of the other one.
No, I get it, I'm, like I said, I understand the side of it.
I'm not talking about playing games, I'm talking about just saying, hey, Kennedy, where are you at? Are you okay?
I would also say too that the law enforcement agencies, especially two, don't like to communicate with the locals and we received so many phone calls and we had two officers on duty and no one knew what was going on. And that's a little disheartening because, you know, I think everyone needs to know there's, you need the high school for response with the state police and local. It'd be different if something happened in your borough because those departments all can hear what's going on in each other's radios and have the real comms, something goes on at one of the schools, all the local municipalities will show up, but the sheriff's department and the state police don't communicate with the local PD. And even though the high school might not be in our jurisdiction or obviously probably be closest, they didn't have a clue. I mean, you know, our phones are all ring off the hook and we're all standing there kind of like a foolish, you know, waiting to hear what's going on. So I would just say, I'm all for the drills, I think they're a good idea, but I think we need to make sure that the communication between the law enforcement agencies happens so that, or as we're, we just say, yeah, don't worry about it. Like, there, do we go, do we not go? We haven't been dispatched yet. It's just that type of thing where I just think if there was just a little better communication between the law enforcement agencies in the area, that would be, especially with the sheriff and the state police.
Well, I, I think if I can distill it down real, real simply, I think the majority of the board approves of the, of the, you know, surprise lockdown, but communications should be set up in advance and prepared. Now, you know, as Mr. Deroso points out, send that out to Berks Borough or Amity, because you know, certainly Amity, middle schools in Amity, and, and communication should go out quicker to the, to the parents to let them know that, that this is not an actual emergency and that it's a, it's a surprise. So I think, you know, in the future, if this is done, you have these communications prepared in advance, queued up, ready to go out, instead of after the event, then, then getting it ready, then, then putting in the queue to go, so.
I have a question, just to make devil's advocate, because I was, I was a parent, not being able to get in touch with my child. When I walked in here this evening, I had a different opinion than I have now. Like, my opinion, this is all changed. My question would be, in that case, you send a communication out to the parents, five minutes after it happens, all the parents are texting the kids, six minutes after it happens, that it's not real. What happens to your drill? Does it stay, does it stay good for the next 20 minutes? I don't know, I'm just, again, I can jump on both sides of this, but I'm not really sure what the answer is and I think the beauty of it is, as you go through these, you learn from your experiences and stuff, it's going to evolve. It's a, you know, environment, so, thought, just throwing it out there, you know.
Fair enough.
I wanted that communication when I walked in, like, how come I didn't get a communication sooner and you waited for me 45 minutes, it's really getting open. Kind of get it, like, I don't know.
I think we should continue to work with the experts and find out what they recommend. I don't know that it's a good idea to terrorize the kids, certainly, certainly at first, yeah, like 15, 20 minutes or whatever, whatever their recommendation is. You're right, for a fire drill, we don't get fired and everybody, they're around you, we try to practice and have a team, so this is how you would fire.
No, I also, the same topic with Mr. Harris, I said, you know, we need to really inform our parents better, if there is a true emergency, what do they do? I mean, they can't all show up in schools because that's just going to create chaos and more problems.
And my information is probably-
You know, so, so that information need, you know, that, that probably should go out before an emergency happens. So as part of our parent packets, we should probably- put it out. If there's an emergency at the middle school, you go to, you know, St. Paul UCC or whatever, whatever the case may be. But we should have that in place and pre-attributed to all the parents so that they know that.
Do companies that work with the average, when they just all that stuff?
Generally, it's on an as needed to know basis. After this test, I reached out to a company that would like to test something with us. And I could talk to you about it in an executive session tonight, that would solve some of the problems and also add another layer of security at the high school. So we can discuss it. We normally don't post our floor plans online. And we don't talk about our evacuation sites until it's going to have to be evacuated. We have evacuation sites at each of the schools, but we don't make them public until we need them. Just so that they're secret. So.
So all I'm saying, I think what you did is great. And I agree with what you're saying over there, but I don't think the parents need any notification. I did was looking for anything from you if it's a real thing. You know, you guys have to handle it. You have to handle it the best way. Now, I will say that I reached out to Aaron because he's the borough manager. And I go, Aaron, you know what's going on over there? And he's the one, he had to walk over to the police station to see if there's, and then I guess they didn't know. So my only thing was maybe cell phones on the, in middle school. But I think overall, but I do think that to a certain basis, it was a drill. And maybe I'm wrong in this, but 45 minutes or 40 minutes of the kids hiding in corners, scared to death, you know, I don't know if that could, that part of it could have been a little faster where they could just get up and sit at their desk. That's all. Maybe it was the teachers that my kids had. I don't know.
Well, I think, I didn't have a student, but I think the purpose of the drill, you met the purpose of the drill. You know now what things work well. You have some teachers, you know, that understand their locker door or close the door, make sure, I mean, there's things to work on. And then you have other items that you have to improve on that are going forward. I mean, that's what happened is what should happen. And I think, I think if maniac, it really, it couldn't have been better. Because now, the next time it happens, you've gone through this. And I think, overall, I think the result was positive.
I, I could say one thing. My communication hub is Scott Matts, who's at the high school.
And the guy who doesn't get our microphones ready?
Correct. So it happened at the high school. So if he was out of his office at the middle school or at Amity, that shuts down a lot of our communication district wide. He has all the passwords on the codes in his head. So it helped that he was stuck in his office when we started making the calls and posting things. But if he's out in a real situation, if he's sick with the flu, I, we have some difficulty in communicating to the public outside of a connect ed call. And that's something, that's something, that's something we learned.
All right. Any other board comments, questions to another topic? Mr. Scott, did I, did I miss anything?
So everyone's probably seen the article about the music booster. And I guess my thought was, is, I don't know what their financial situation is going to be the remainder of the year. Probably not good. But I would assume, like, is there anything that we've already assumed that they were paying for, that the band is now going to need, that we need to add some extra into their budget for this year and or next year? Because we're probably not going to have the support. You know, there's probably things that they can't do without. So, and I, just my thought. I hope that's been discussed with this.
They don't have the reserve fund, you know, money they were going to use. They were saving for the uniforms, cost of that. And that money's not there. They do a lot of other things in the district, you know, tuning instruments, buying cheap music, all those type of things. I don't know the extent of what, how bad it is. I just know it is, she basically liked that.
I just want to add, just would like to talk with Mr. Caselka. And in terms of uniforms, he, his recommendation, I can forward the, you know, to the board if you like, that we want to come from waiting another year or two on the uniforms. There's some other reasons for that. So if we talk about these, if they're not full funding, I just thought I'd share that. Is there a thought that possibly when we have these organizations, having anyone, that would be the treasurer, getting bonded? And then do we carry, I know, in a little different municipal government, the school government, but the type of insurance with someone that's bonded that would help offset some of the laws. But I think if we are requiring bonding, you're also requiring people with a much higher, less aptitude probably to take money. Plus, you get the insurance. So I don't know if we currently do that, or is that something that we get these, you know, anyone as a treasurer of an organization with a significant amount of money, maybe we should require some bonding and insurance or rider policy.
Well, I guess the question is, can we require that of an outside 501(c)(3) organization to do that?
We do have a booster policy that we just revised. There were some things that they were different in that policy. They might have known earlier, things like a requirement for external auditing on the interval instead of all this internal auditing, maybe licensing, bonding with the treasurer.
Perhaps Mrs. Reno can add some color to the conversation.
I can tell you, three years ago, I believe it was, you did a support organization policy that every summer, every support organization has to submit a budget, who their officers are. And there is a form that the district created. One of the questions on there is, are you bonded? Yes or no. And then every fall, the school board approves.
Is that, that was just sports?
No, it's every support organization. So it's PTC, music and sports. Laser foundation is not included. And then it was, are you a 501(c)(3)?
Insurance.
The insurance, because music and sports shares their liability insurance. So we both have to submit a copy of that. So the board is also.
So we do have that information.
You have the information.
If you have the information, if it wasn't falsified.
Yeah.
Because the individual, if anyone is familiar with Adam Ross, he was the, he was a school board member for many years. He was also the boosters and CPA as his own accounting firm. That, they used him exclusively up until this timeframe. So.
But I do think it also asks on that form, are there two people on the bank statement? How do you do your audits? Do you have internal audits, external audits? So it does, you guys ask all the questions.
I mean, you know, this is, unfortunately, this is not uncommon when it comes to these type of groups. Because usually you have the same person in that spot because no one else wants to do the work for years and years. And, you know, one, one month they're short on the bill and they notice, gosh, I could write a check to myself. And that was pretty darn easy because no one, no one follows up with me.
This isn't either the first time this has happened in our school district. Although the prospect's a lot higher this time.
And there is some, there is some crossover, at least mentally, with the real life.
So to Mr. Dershowitz's point, I don't know. Obviously, we're asking the information. But the question is, are we, are we actually validating and verifying and?
We can't force it. It's not our organization.
So.
But it is one of the reasons why we didn't want to hold on to the individual team accounts.
Right. Which are back into the district now.
Yes.
So, yeah. Well, if, certainly if anybody has any suggestions for the future as far as tightening up these things, I'm sure we'd love to, love to get that information that we could do. That's, you know, not, not overly taxing on the time of the organizations because obviously that's always an issue, is finding folks to volunteer for these things. But maybe that could, but help strengthen the security of it. So.
Is there anything that we're charging as a school district to the boosters?
I mean, there's, when you say to use.
I just meant we can take it away, but they don't have to charge them if there was.
No, we just, we have the authority not to approve them to operate in the district.
Okay.
If they, the same, a booster organization, they refuse to get the liability insurance that we tell them to get, well, then we just, they'll operate in the building. So.
Yeah, I just meant if we had an expense, we're giving them.
Yeah. I mean, the best case is that, you know, maybe this person is forced to make restitution and they do so. But, yeah, we shall see. Answer your question, Mr. Scott? Any other board comments, questions, concerns? Nothing? About public comment on any others at all?
Six, nothing?
That's what I'm looking at. Okay. Fair enough. Then looking for motion for adjournment?
Motion.
There you go, adjourned.